I open the board of, uh, planning board of adjustment. Um, the purpose of this hearing is, is for item V twenty-three point one zero point zero one, variance request at fifty-six forty-one Anglesley Court, PDI number zero seven zero five four nine three six for relief from article nine point three dash two four of the Stallings Department ordinance, ordinance for a deck. This item will be heard in a quasi judicial matter and the chair, town staff, and land use attorney will describe the process.
Yeah, so before we open the public hearing, we, could you approve the minutes and add item two A for board of adjustment?
Yes, 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 yes.
Meetings going forward. So you have to hold up, uh, do the minutes first, yeah.
Please note the following agenda, this Stallings Board of Adjustment, October seventeenth, twenty, twenty-three, seven PM. Agenda, call meeting to order, approval of minutes from ten eighteen twenty twenty-two.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the October eighteenth twenty twenty-two.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Two B, I would like the board to add agenda B two, the calendar scheduled for future board of adjustment meetings from January first to twenty twenty-four and onward.
So first you have to vote to add it to the agenda and then you'll vote on the item after.
Right.
I, I move that we add it to the, approve adding it to the agenda.
All in favor? All right.
Great.
Okay.
Now we can discuss it. Um, so last year, we voted just to do the twenty twenty-three schedule at meet as needed. We need to say from twenty twenty-four onward, we're going to meet as needed. So we can just say, we can leave it open ended and never have to revisit this again unless otherwise changed by the board adjustments. And you can vote and say, I approve whatever Max said if you'd like to for this one.
I, I make a motion that we, Max said.
Yeah, voting to.
Voting to hold board adjustment meetings when.
As needed from twenty twenty-four onward.
Twenty twenty-four onward.
Yeah, there we go.
All in favor?
All right, and then you can open the public hearing on this.
Do I have to read this?
Oh, actually, yes, I would say read all of this. I will read it and then.
We'll have to read one and two again?
No, I'll read number three.
Right.
Okay, so this is prior to opening up the public hearing and swearing in. So this is, all has to do with the, um, just the variance. So at this time, I will qual- qualify members under a conflict of interest and pre-hearing bias rules, um, and you guys will let me know and I'll ask you a question. Does any member of the board have a fixed opinion prior to this hearing that is not susceptible to change? If he's yes, then, then you can't vote. So no? Okay, great. Um, has any member of the board had communications about this matter before tonight's hearing?
No.
Okay. Does any member of the board have a close familial business or other associational, excuse me, relationship with a person affected by this application? Okay. Does any member of the board have financial interest in the outcome of the matter? No? Okay. Does the applicant wish to challenge any member of the board on the grounds of supporting any of these qualifying questions? So, do you believe they are lying or?
No.
Okay, great. I, I would say, um, I don't mean to make it funny, I just don't want to read the entire paragraph, I apologize.
Very formal.
Yes, I'll make sure it's more formal from here on out, I apologize. Okay, so to approve a variance, state law requires a fourth, fifth vote. So to have your application for variance approved, you will need all four members present, which you do, and every single vote, voting member has to, uh, vote an affirmative for it to pass. Do you wish to proceed or you, would, would you like to defer the meeting where five board members are present? Okay.
After the chair opens the quasi judicial hearing, we'll proceed as follows. All parties who intend to give testimony or present, present evidence of any sort, pro or con, must complete an oral, an oath form and be sworn in by the clerk to the board. The staff member will briefly explain his zoning ordinance provisions at issue in this hearing. The board may question the staff member and then the applicant will be given an opportunity to question the staff member. The applicant or the applicant's representative, if they have one, will present their case for why they believe they're entitled to receive a variance they have applied for. The burden of proof, proof to establish such element of requirements in state law and the town zoning ordinance is on the applicant. The board and the town staff may question the applicant and each of the applicant's witnesses. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, anyone else who has standing may present sworn state testimony to support the application. At the conclusion of all testimony in favor of the applicant, anyone with standing wishing to present sworn testimony in opposition to the application or to ask questions of the applicant may present their testimony or evidence. The applicant may present evidence or closing argument to rebuttal to any testimony in, in opposition to the application or provide additional information based on questions raised if they so choose. At the close of all evidence and argument, the chair will close the hearing.
Great, um, so if you have any questions about where we are in, in the vote and the process, let me know and I'll, I'll direct, I'll direct staff, or direct to you guys. After all evidence, testimony, and argument has been presented, the board will review the matter, deliberate on the required findings of fact, and render a decision in the form of a motion to approve the variance, approve the variance with conditions, or deny the variance. This will be done without further comment from any party. The board may elect to defer the decision. Um, and then the public may remain present during the board's deliber- deliberations. All exhibits and physical evidence introduced at the hearing must remain with the town as part of the official record of the hearing. Do not introduce any photos, drawings, writings, or ever other physical evidence that you are not willing to part with. Please hand any exhibits or physical evidence to the clerk who will mark it for inclusion in the record of this hearing. If the decision of the board is not appealed but to the superior court, you may ask the clerk for return of your items. Uh, when you present, you'll give it to them. The board is acting in a quasi judicial capacity for the purposes of this hearing and can only accept sworn testimony. While the board will not specifically exclude hearsay evidence, it is given little or no weight in the board's decision. Appeal of any decision made by the board on this application is to the superior court in Union County. Any aggrieved party with standing will have thirty days from the date of the board's written decision to, into which to, to appeal. To receive a written copy of the decision, any party must file a written request to the clerk, with the clerk, to the board or the chair no later than five PM tomorrow.
We are now ready to open the hearing. Does anyone have any questions before we begin? Anyone, anyone? Okay. Will all those who plan to give testimony this evening, please come forward and be sworn in by the clerk?
It's just in case.
Okay.
Angle C Court. The applicants Jeremy and Sarah Jacob request a variance at five six four one Angle C Court, parcel ID zero seven zero five four nine three six to request relief from article nine point three dash four of the Stallings Development Ordinance. Nine point three dash, oh, two four, uh, states that decks shall be constructed only in established rear yards and are not permitted to encroach in the rear setback. Um, so this is the current conditions of the property on, on the screen right here. The parcel lines do, uh, of the GIS do not align with, uh, the actual lot itself, um, but as you can see, it's an irregular shaped flag lot and the house is right here in, I can zoom in, and I can also pull this on Google Maps as well if you have difficulty seeing this picture. Um, but as you can see, it's in a, a, a flag lot, which means it's shaped like a flag. Um, there's some additional perspectives in the, uh, that I provided as well, just kind of try to find a really top-down aerial of the, the house so you can see the deck, um, in question. And at any point as well, if you have any questions and want me to pull these back up, let me know. Um, so there is a little bit of history for this site. The home was built as part of the Shannon Morris subdivision, but it was built in Union County, not within Stallings jurisdiction. So in two thousand it was built. Stallings annexed this area in two thousand and two. Um, so additional facts is the property is split between the county lines, Mecklenburg and Union County, but it's located completely within Stallings jurisdiction. Um, and the zoning for this property is single-family residential two. As you can see to the right, here is a, um, plot plan of the property. You can see the shape and the applicant also is going to present this as well. Um, you can see, I'm gonna zoom in actually, uh, and I'm sure the applicant will also say this, but you can see this dotted, see the house in the dotted line, you can see the deck in this shade extends past the setback. Our current ordinance does not allow any decks to, to be built outside the setback now. This is built prior to our adopted ordinance in two thousand and eighteen, as I can, as I stated, it was, the house was built in two thousand. So eighteen years before the, the ordinance that doesn't allow you to build decks outside the setback.
The deck is already there.
Correct, it is already built.
That was grandfathered in.
It is grandfathered in.
But the deck's not being replaced?
Um, the applicant would like to request a variance to replace the deck and he'll, uh, go into more detail on what he plans on doing with the site.
What is considered the rear lot line and the side lot line on that?
Yeah, I'll go, let me zoom in real quick. Um, hold on one second. So the frontage is this, uh, entrance through the driveway and this will be the front setback, this dotted line right here. You can see the front of the house here and then it, the side setback, I would believe, is this entire dotted line right here, uh, to the right. The left side setback is this shortened setback and then the rear is this long setback behind the house. Um, as you can see, there is a, the, the tip of the house is all the way to the rear setback and the deck extends into the rear setback as, uh, SFR two. Um, now, when it was built, I don't, I don't know the original Union County zoning, but it was built within the county, so it didn't follow any Stallings regulations at the time. And I don't believe the Stallings regulations, uh, I don't have the two thousand and two Stallings regulations, I look for them, um, I probably have them in some long-lost file, um, somewhere, I can't find them. But, um, it wasn't built with those, so it doesn't.
You can ask questions at this point?
You can ask me questions and then, uh, yeah.
Um, if like the application is granted, it applies just to one project, it's not a blanket going forward?
Correct, it applies just to the specific deck alleviation, so I don't believe the applicant wants to make his whole backyard a, a deck, but he could with the variance. Now, if you want to state in your variance request that you're allowing him to build what he says he's gonna build in this variance request, you can state that. Or you could just pass the variance and allow him alleviation from that section, uh, only for this parcel.
Now, that's the current setback or is that the Stallings setback?
Um, this is the current Stallings setback.
Okay.
Way the ordinance is, it does not give staff the flexibility to.
Correct.
Take it a final decision.
I, I only have flexibility on when it comes to like principal structure setbacks. I can do like ten percent, um, but not for a deck. Um, so the next part would be the, the applicant, uh, present, presentation. At the end, uh, of his presentation, I'll go forward with the statement of justification. I'll also read the applicant's response on the statements of justification and then if you have any questions about the statements of justification, I'll have the applicant answer, answer them.
Now with an existing deck, if an applicant wanted to add to that deck, that would have to go through this procedure?
If it, it was past the setback line, yes.
Because it is back, past.
Correct.
So even if, with, because it's existing, you can't add to it?
Um, so it's existing past the setback line, so he can't add past the setback line, which he would like, that's what the applicant would like to do. So they could replace the deck with the exact same footprint, but I'll let the applicant kind of go into detail, they're gonna put a, oops, excuse me, that's the, the news.
Oh boy. Let's see what he was watching.
Anyways, um, pretty much the applicant could replace the exact same footprint because it's grandfathered in, but he does not want it to replace it with the exact same footprint. I think he's gonna put an enclosed porch as well and change the dimensions of the deck. It is, uh, a deck that is grandfathered in, I think it was, uh, I don't know.
So only that little triangle piece.
When it was built.
Has been grandfathered.
Correct.
Well.
Correct. Just, I'll zoom in real quick. This little piece past this dotted line is grandfathered in, yes.
Okay. So if he didn't add.
Past the dotted line, yeah. He could, uh, essentially put a deck, uh, here, additional deck here, but I don't know the layout of the house. I don't know if that's conducive with the layout of the house, I'll let the applicant kind of let you know where and what his plans are for the deck.
Yeah, so if he took that point that's way out there.
Uh, here?
No, 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 the point of the deck.
Right here?
The top of the triangle and it went that way, you can't do that.
If they were replacing it with the exact same footprint and the exact same.
All right.
Like deck, yes, they could, but I think he's gonna build an enclosed structure. I will let him answer that.
Sure.
Um, would you like the applicant to present his evidence now or his, okay.
If you're done, you know.
I am done.
Okay.
Okay, so I just had it up and, yeah, it was this. All right, so state your name, evidence to me.
Okay. I am Jeremy Jacob. I present this as evidence. Thanks everyone for hearing my application tonight, thanks Max for all your help on preparation, thanks for series additions, my contractors for being here with me. Um, Max kind of covered what, the first part that I wanted to talk about was just our lot. Uh, you can see from the survey, it's an irregular lot, the rear setback line does not parallel to our house, so we're at an angle. The top left corner is right at the setback, um, so kind of limits where we can build. Um, so what I also want to call attention to is that little, that part that juts out in the back of the house, um, it's a two-story with windows, I'll have a picture of it later that you can see, um, I'm gonna speak to that. So when you consider the, that outlet on the back of the house, at first I should say what we're trying to do with the, the deck. It's gonna be very similar footprint, it's just changing slightly. The amount that it encroaches into the setback is relatively the same. Um, we'd like to do a covered porch, which is gonna be on that top left side, um, away from the outlet. So if you consider the outlet on the back of the house and like a reasonable twelve-foot depth of a deck, um, and saying you couldn't build on that outlet, it basically makes it fifty percent of the back of the house is not usable to put a deck in or a covered porch. Um, the project that I'm proposing, eighty percent, roughly eighty percent is within the setback. Figure two here, this is just another aerial view, I tried to approximately put where the, um, property line is, the yellow line's the setback line, so you can kind of see the existing deck right there. Um, one thing I wanted to point out is the house is setback from my neighbors, so we are so far back off of the cul-de-sac that these neighbors don't have any view to our backyard, neither do the ones over here, they can't even see the deck behind us. Um, currently there are woods behind us that basically surround the whole rear property. I will get into what the development is for those, um, in a point later. Um, all right, now this red line here shows the changes in the footprint that I'm looking to make. So you can see it moves slightly to the left, but comes shorter. Um, so it's pretty much that little rectangular on the left side is about the same as the rectangle on the top that's being removed. Um, so the footprint is very similar, it's just that red section, if you made that a full rectangle, that's, would be where the porch is and then the rest would just be a deck as it is right now. Uh, four, this is the Stinson Farms proposed, proposed development for behind our house where the woods currently is. Um, I put what I found on the city's website for where it is, the latest update I could find. So the three homes, which is one mine on Angle C Court, um, they are proposing at least a seventy inch, seventy foot buffer, uh, or a hundred foot buffer with a fence with tall evergreens. So just saying that in the future, we wouldn't be encroaching upon someone else's property. Um, you can also see kind of where we are right back here, this is just a street, so there's not like a single-family residence that's right next to here and you'd have these evergreens kind of in the way. And then when I talked about the architecture of the house and the outlet that's jutting out, so the picture on the lower left, um, or on the left side, that is looking from where the porch would be towards that outlet. Those two windows are stacked so close together that you can't put a roof in between there if you want to do a covered deck. Um, there's just no space for it because of where the windows are and that's the same thing on the other side of the house, those two windows are, are there, that's on the, if I go back up, basically it's this outlet right here, the window's there and the window's here. Um, these are the proposed plan and elevations, so this is looking kind of the opposite way. So this is looking at the back of the house, this portion over here is the covered porch, the rest over here is the deck, this basically retains the same shape, this is just slightly changing where right now it goes like right here and now it's moving this over this way. And I think the property line basically kind of cuts the porch in half where that setback is. And then here's just a, a view, what it would look like. Um, and I do have HOA approval, so I just put an excerpt in from the HOA approval. Uh, and I just wanted to close, uh, quickly with the questions. Uh, I know Max is gonna go over them too, so I won't spend too much time, but unnecessary hardship would result from the strict application of the ordinance, so almost fifty percent of the rear of the house is unusable if you consider the, where the setback is and a reasonable deck and the outlet of the house and the architecture of the house, uh, which makes it almost very difficult to reasonably build a covered porch back there. Uh, number two is the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property such as location, size, or topography. So our lot is not a typ- typical rectangular lot, um, the rear setback is not parallel to our house and it runs at an angle. Uh, number three is the hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. Uh, we purchased the house in April of twenty twenty-two, we weren't aware that the current deck was in violation of the rear setback and we haven't changed a lot since we bought it. Uh, and then number four, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. So the house is setback from our neighbors, uh, doesn't affect any sightlines, currently there's woods there and then even the proposed development, um, it doesn't, it has a large setback from our property line and it's not facing a street, or it is facing a street. And I think that's all I have.
Any questions?
I, no, no.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so the next part is before, if you have any questions for me, uh, let me know, but the next part is the statements of justification. We'll vote one by one, all four have to be voted, be voted in affirmative and every single person has to vote in affirmative as well for it to pass. So, um, do you have any questions about that before I start?
No, my only question would be the, um, the size of the piece of the deck that's there now that's gonna be taken away, how does that compare with the size of the piece that you're gonna add to it?
It is relatively the same.
Where that red line was on that other picture.
I'll pull that back up and then I'll.
It's smaller, a little bit smaller but wider.
Yeah, just move slightly.
Yeah, it's, yeah, kind of smaller, wider, shorter and wider, maybe.
Does that help clarify?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I don't, we don't need to read anything verbatim anymore, um, but, so there's four statements of justification, we'll go one by one, I'll read them and then I'll let you, uh, call the vote. Um, and I will not read the response, uh, he already went into detail with the response, but if you have any questions about the hardship, we'll go over them before you make the vote. Um, so statement of justification, number one, unnecessary hardship would result from the strict, strict application of the ordinance, expense is not a valid hardship.
They're saying, that's saying unnecessary hardship would result on his, to him.
Right.
To them, as they use for their property.
Yes. So does, do you, if you vote in affirmative, you believe that this ordinance ha, is, uh, creating unnecessary hardship for this application, for this resident?
Or should we just vote?
You will, you will call, yes, you will, you have to make a motion. Would you mind closing the hearing, please?
I would.
Okay, closing the hearing. All right, and then.
We have now concluded the portion of the hearing that were the applicants and other present, uh, evidence to the board, the board will now proceed to discussion, this, the side portion of process, no one is permitted to address the board during this portion of tonight's meeting, however, any, everyone is permitted to remain present and listen quietly to the board's discussion and vote. We'll now review each required finding and vote on whether that finding has been proven by competent, uh, competent material and substantial evidence.
So you can still ask questions, but.
All right. Does this, uh, request provide unnecessary hardship, result from the strict application of the ordinance, not, expense is not a valid hardship?
Do we all vote together or do we all?
One makes a mo, you make a motion.
I make a motion.
Second. Just read that, that you do believe that does.
I do believe that it's unnecessary, it creates an unnecessary hardship that would result, that results from the strict application of this ordinance.
All in favor, Earl?
Okay, so statement justification, one, passes.
Yes.
All right, statement of justification, two, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property such as location, size, or topography.
Oh yeah, I'll make a motion that this hardship, that we vote in the affirmative because this hard, this, the hardship results from the conditions that are peculiar to the property due to its size and to, well, probably topography, but I don't know.
All in favor?
Okay, statement of justification, two, passes. All right, stations, number three, the hardship did not result from the actions taken by the applicant or the property owner.
I move that the hardship did not result from the actions taken by the applicant or property owner.
No, second that one.
All in favor?
Number three, passes. All right, and the final one, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance, such. and intent of the ordinance such such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved.
And I move that, I make a motion that. Questioned variance is consistent with. Or such as the public safety is secure and.
How do we vote? All in favor?
Yep.
All right.
So it, your variance passes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, so now you can close, close the Board of Adjustments if you'd like.
Close.
I hereby close the Board of Adjustment hearing.
Okay, that's it. Oh, you got a second, you got a second?
I have second. Yeah, I make a motion that we adjourn and there was a.
I get to hit it again, huh?
All in favor?
All right.